The hour of six o'clock has arrived. First things first, best I can tell the council, except for council member Schiff, have you gotten some food over there? Council's had a chance to get some food. I'm assuming the city paid for it, so if you want to eat some of that food over there, it's waiting for you. So, belongs to the citizens. Pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, the Bastrop City Council will hold a special workshop meeting on Tuesday, February 16, 2016, today, at 6:00 PM, this hour, at the Bastrop City Hall Council Chambers, where we are, 1311 Chestnut Street, Bastrop, Texas, to consider the following matters. Call to order. We have a complete quorum, important staff members present, and so we are called to order. The Bastrop City Council will recess this special meeting and convene into a workshop session to discuss the following. First item is Piney Creek rezoning for a plus or minus 90.91 acres out of the A-11 Bastrop Town Track located north of the railroad tracks on the northwest corner of Riverwood, Hawthorne, and Carter Streets. Mr. Talbot and whoever else on your staff wants to address this.
Mayor, I'm going to step down and just give a brief PowerPoint presentation. I did get a request, just to clarify some of our rules and regulations, and I will do that at this time. One of the questions was posed to me by the council is to, what's the difference between zoning and subdivision regulations? Well, one of the big things is zoning is found in your local government code in Chapter 211 that deals strictly with zoning, and subdivision regulations are dealt with in Chapter 212 of the Local Government Corp-- Local Government Code. And a summary of what the Local Government Chapter 211 speaks to in zoning, it talks about the city's requirement for developing its overall land use plan, applies in the city limits only, it's to ensure consistent land uses throughout the town, it's supposed to enhance and protect landowners with consistent uses and values, tells owners in general terms what uses could be made of the land, residential, commercial, industrial, and then sets out the basic land use provisions such as lot size and lot use. This context is what is used by cities throughout Texas in the development of their zoning ordinances. Whereas your subdivision regulation gets into the development process and speaks to the process of developing a tract of land, the difference between subdivision and zoning is your subdivisions regulations not only apply in the city, but in the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction as well. Further, what the subdivision regulation sets out in the Local Government Code, of which we develop our subdivision regulation, it controls development and specific design standards, such as public utility services and connections, traffic in streets, layout of lots, sidewalks, power plant, and open spaces, utility dedication and easements, rights of ways, and infrastructure. So I hope this one chart helps you to differentiate when we speak between zoning and subdivision, because it's kind of been back and forth as we've gone through this process.
And tonight, we're only on the left side.
That's right. Ms. McNally, does that help? Okay. Let's see, which one do I, let's see. Okay. A subdivision, a subdivision authority is granted to municipalities by the state of Texas so that they may develop and adopt local regulations and rules that will promote the safe, healthy, and orderly development in the community, protect the citizens of the city, and the ETJ. And the reason that the ETJ is included, because at some time in the future, in the history of a city, they will annex out into the ETJ, and by applying your subdivision regulations into the ETJ, and you annex it into the city, you're annexing in the proper type of development standards for your city. This is done through the plating process, which we are not at in this particular case, during which a developer divides the land into tracts that will be developed and built upon. The subdivision regulations deal with matters such as public utility service, connections, street roadway design, traffic control, infrastructure installation, compliance with uniform building codes, et cetera. In fact, if you remember at the first reading of this ordinance, I talked about the fact that the subdivision regulation lays out your traffic impact analysis requirements, because that's when you deal with traffic issues. If a plat is submitted and it meets all of the city's subdivision regulation, and that means that they're not asking for a variance to any specific section, then approval by the city is mandated by law, and failure to approve the plat will subject the city to claims and potential lawsuits. Zoning, zoning authority is granted to cities by the state of Texas so that the city may control orderly growth of the community and ensure that the land uses in the city protect and maintain property rights and values for the citizens. Zoning should reflect the city's philosophy on land use as it sets forth in its comprehensive plan. And I know this is a big one, because we're going through the update of that right now. And that may, down the road, reflect some changes in some of your other ordinances, as well as your zoning ordinances. Not all cities adopt and enforce zoning regulations. Houston is an example of a city that does not zone. In Houston, an auto repair shop may be built right next door to a single-family residence, because they do not have zoning controls that differentiate the type of buildings. And that's a very important fact, and Houston is used as a classic example of a city that does not have zoning. Standard zoning, standard zoning has proven to be too inflexible to accommodate innovative design and the building of more creative products. In recent years, the US housing and commercial markets, and this is all the way from the Urban Land Institute, the American Planning Association, and a plethora of, the National Home Builders Association, a variety of your professional organizations have, in recent years, addressed this about the approach of standard zoning, and have begun to demand a less standard development than in past, such as mixed-use neighborhoods and grouped housing units with increasingly shared open space area, public trails, and recreational areas. To build a development that varies from a standard, uniform realm of houses, a developer must be granted a series of variances from the standard zoning ordinances. The variance process is time-consuming and expensive for both the developer and the city. Variances also require a showing of a hardship, which is not always the genesis of an innovative product design, such as a mixed-use residential neighborhood. Plan development, which is before you tonight, has been generated to solve this problem and provide zoning flexibility while still maintaining standards in the community, city uses, planned development ordinance, such as the ordinance won before the council tonight as Piney Creek. Plan zoning is not found in the Local Government Code, per se, but the practice has been approved by the Texas courts and judicial decisions. What may be encompassed in a planned zoning ordinance will vary from city to city, but only the topics set forth in each community's plan and development code may be included in the community's PD ordinance. Therefore, Bastrop may only require that the developer include details on the items that are specified in the city's zoning PD ordinance and the Piney Creek PD ordinance as before you. You know, is that clear? What are the topics set out in the city's PD ordinance? This is Section 32 of Chapter 14 of the City Code of Ordinances. Development requires for each PD district shall include, but may not be limited to, use, density, lot area, lot width, lot depth, yard depths and widths, building height, building elevations, and coverage, floor area ratio, parking access, screening, landscape, accessory building, signs, lighting, project phasing or scheduling, management association, other requirements as a council, and planning and zoning may deem appropriate. Planned Development District. Most authorities agree that the best planned developments set out all the critical requirements and specifications in detail for the proposed development, so the developer, the citizens, and the city staff, and city officials each share a clear and uniform agreement as to what will actually be developed under the parameters of the PD ordinance proposed or approved. Take careful to fully understand the range of potential outcomes of a future development, actual site plan versus a non-binding concept plan. That's a big issue you need to understand, the actual site plan versus a non-binding concept plan. PD ordinances should contain an expiration date by which the PD ordinance shall expire if the proposed development is not substantially completed or key steps in the process are not completed. And that's a verbiage summary of the key issues that you asked me to address.
I was trying to ask you a question while you had the PowerPoint still up about the site plan versus, I mean, the last slide that you had. The site plan versus a non-binding concept plan. I think it might be good to specify what we have before us tonight.
You have a contextual ordinance which sets forth the development standards, and attached to that, because he hasn't gotten into the subdivision process, is the concept plan. And so that, the concept plan that you see is how, at this point in time, the developer envisions the property being developed, but that is subject to some adjustments when he gets out there and starts his field work, and that's why I wanted the council to understand that differentiation. But he still will have to comply with whatever standards of development regarding all the other things that I listed are in the context of your ordinance.
I just thought it was important to make sure that we stress that point.
Good question. So that was, what I was, the feedback that I got back from the council, and I felt that was more addressed to me than the developer, so that's why I did this. I know Mr. Schiff, the developers here, I think he has some items that he wants to present to the council. I don't know if Mr. Schiff has talked to the developer, and I didn't know if Karen wanted to add any other comments before Mr. Singleton proposed this.
Well, you want to call in Mr. Singleton now, Mike?
Sure. I got a couple of questions.
No, no. Mike, Willie, and then Willie.
Mike, is, and I didn't see anything in our packet concerning some of the issues that were mentioned last time about, you had made some comments about the potential to have 102 lots, or there could be 102 lots. Has that been addressed, or has that been talked to?
It would be my recommendation that it's part of the--
Mike, you better go to the mic, because we were, are we on TV tonight? Yeah, we're on TV.
Hey. It will be part of my recommendation tonight, that even though the concept plan shows 170 lots, that we insert into the standards that the maximum lots that can be built will be Because the ordinance will be--
That wasn't my question. My question was, with the concern, the concern of the neighborhood is not 170 lots, the concern of the neighborhood was the small lots and small houses.
Yes.
And I thought, I heard you say in the last meeting, that it was the potential to have 102 small lots or small houses.
Right. That's, that's correct.
Has that been addressed since our last meeting?
I think that the developer is going to present you tonight a revised site plan, based upon some discussions he had with Mr. Schiff, and we'll see what that is when that comes before us.
And I have two other questions that I was asked to ask before the, before you tonight. On the original SF9, why, how long has that been in, had in place, or why is it, why it was zoned over in that particular neighborhood? Was it because it was maybe compatible to the neighbors across the street, or why it was left at that?
I mean, I would have to go back, I mean, when in my previous community, we, we did adopt a new zoning ordinance, and we kept a very detailed record of that, and because there's several statutory requirements that you have to do when you redo your zoning ordinance, and the process that you have to follow. I wasn't here, Willie, when that was done, so I don't--
Okay.
It would be just a shot in the dark as to why that was designated SF9, and across the street was SF7. I just don't know.
Thank you. The second question was, could this, this zoning request from SF9 to PD be conceded as spot zoning? That was the second question.
No, I think because you can control that by the standards that you set forth in your PD development ordinance, with all the things that I listed there.
Did you say, just thinking about Willie's question? Did you say that, Willie, you asked about SF9 and the connection with the community, the neighborhood, did you say across the Carter Street is SF7?
I believe that's correct, yes, sir, Mayor.
And that, okay, we'll try to compare that when we get to the details. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? I hope this was helpful, that's, I tried to address the question that was posed to me. Okay. Thank you.
So, yeah, let's ask Mr. Singleton to come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, David Singleton, applicant. Since our last meeting, we've done some homework, too. I think we have a PowerPoint here, I'm not sure who's, let's pull that up for me. We'll go through a series of slides. One of them is a comparative analysis between SF9 and a PD, what's being proposed. We're going to start with a layout, because there's been so much conversation and debate about what does SF9 look like, and if you just left it SF9, what does this tract look like? And quite frankly, the partners in this deal have raised that very question, because a motion was made to deny this PD. And so, the partners have come up and said, what does this look like for us if we're denied? And so, because this process has gone on as long as it has, we've, we've gotten further down the road on some drainage studies, some other things that, again, your process doesn't normally dictate until later in that process, but we now have the benefit of that information. So, what we've done, and we previously showed you a very rough sketch, it was, we were very reticent to show that, because it was really a very early sketch on what could have been done under SF9 with the floodplain as we understood it at the time, and we said it could yield about 173 lots. Because it's been such a point of contention, we've spent a fair amount of time since the last meeting studying, what would this tract look like developed, under SF9 as it is today? And the layout that you see today reflects 209 lots, two connections to Carter Street, and this is the example of what Mr. Talbot just suggested. If we would have avoided the zoning process and gone straight to plating, and the partners in this deal said, how do you recommend proceeding with this, I would have submitted a plat that looks just like this, and that's the way we would propose the tract would be developed. Thankfully, we're not here doing that. I don't think this is the highest and best use for that tract. We spent the time, we show this tonight, to show you, because it's been such a point of contention, what does this tract look like under the current zoning? And if asked to develop this tract under the current zoning, that's the plat that I would submit to you. So, in the interest of moving on, that's come up, I just wanted to go to see what that looked like.
Mr. Singleton, did that show 173 lots?
No, ma'am, that's 209 lots.
209, okay.
The previous, the, the very rough sketch we had done early in this process, without a whole lot of information, without a revised floodplain analysis, yielded 173.
Okay.
Where we are, and again, where we are today, it's at 209.
Willie has a question, Mr. Singleton.
Mr. Singleton, in the last meeting, under the, the former proposal that you had before us on the, on the, on the planned development that you were, you were asking for, remind me if I'm wrong, was it 43 acres that you were developing at that time out of the 90?
It was roughly that, that's about right.
Okay. On this layout here of the 90 acres, how much are you developing out of this?
There's probably another 20 acres that, that we've identified between the original 43 and where--
Because of the new drainage study?
Due to the drainage study.
Yeah, because I could never figure out on, if you had 90 acres, and you were going to develop 43, and you had, and you were putting 40, I don't know if you were saying you were putting 47 in a floodplain or parkland, and, but I was just curious to see how much of that 47 acres was actually in the floodplain.
Well, and, and this reflects sort of what we always thought existed, we just had to do a drainage study to prove it. The FEMA floodplain was very different, but this is--
So it could be roughly 60 acres on this particular drawing here, maybe, maybe more?
Yes, sir, I believe that's correct.
Okay. Please go ahead.
Now, the discussion has been made, what's the difference between the SF9 and the PD? So, again, based on that latest SF9 layout, it would be 209. Our PD proposes a maximum of 170. The parkland dedication, your requirements under your ordinance, is based on either numbers of lots or total developable area. We assumed it under the total developable area, we made some assumptions there, and we're at about 2.6 acres. Under the PD, we're proposing about 35 acres of parkland, is what's being proposed under today's PD. The number of years to complete the development, you know, we've said from the very beginning, we don't believe SF9 is the market in Bastrop today, especially as an infill piece where this tract is located. I think your marketing study that, that your ED commissioned suggested the same. So, when you talk about, how long is it going to take to build this thing out, which is, you know, you're probably going to look at five sections that are built every couple of years, that take a couple of years to burn through those 40 lots or so, I think you'd be looking at somewhere in the 10-year range to develop out under SF9. Our understanding of your market, sort of after studying your market study and doing our own conversation with builders, we think that it'll take about a year to put the first phase of lots on the ground. We would propose to do the PD in two phases. Again, there'd be about two years between Phase 1 and Phase 2, and you'd see construction wrapping up in about half of that time. One of the other things that we looked at is your comprehensive land use plan, and certainly the PD is consistent with your future land use under your comp plan. We also looked at your future parks plans, and the understanding of the desire to someday connect Fisherman's Park with the park that's planned further up, Piney Creek, if you will. And the SF9, under the, the way that it would be developed under conventional zoning with standard subdivision, there wouldn't be the opportunity to connect that trail. We're proposing not only to provide the ability to connect that trail, but build that entire piece along the 22, 2500 feet of creek through the tract. One of the other things that's come out of this discussion is, there's some additional right-of-way, that someday, if Carter Street is improved and expanded, there will need to be some additional right-of-way. Under your current ordinance, and the state statute says, well, you can get half of it from us, and you have to go get the other half from across the street. We've suggested, because we've identified that as a potential need, and we can plan accordingly during this process, under the PD, we would propose to dedicate all five feet that's necessary to get to your ultimate desired cross-section. In the infrastructure, and we've said this from the very beginning, if we can get close to getting to your AV with a less amount of infrastructure to maintain, it's better for you and it's better for us. And certainly, the amount of infrastructure that we hand to the city upon completion for perpetual maintenance is certainly a lot less between the 209-lot layout and the 170-lot layout that we're suggesting is more appropriate. And by its very nature, when you have more streets and more rooftops, you're going to get a lot more impervious cover under one than the other. And finally, you know, we did the TIA early in the process, we've identified the number of cars that one generates, and certainly 209 lots generates a lot more traffic than 170 lots. One of the other things that we were asked to look at, excuse me, during this process is, what does the 60/40 lot split look like? So we took our current configuration, and we converted enough of the lots to get to the 60%, 40% split, and so the idea is, from a worst-case standpoint, what does it look like? Personally, I don't think this is the, the way it ought to be developed, but this is what that looks like. And we were asked, look, at least let us see what a 60/40 lot split looks like, so that we can understand, you know, when, you know, just less than half the lots are the larger lots, and just over half the lots are the smaller lots, what does that look like? That's what that looks like. And then finally, we go back to, well, this is, this, I don't know where this slide came from, but this is the, the future park I was talking about, and the, the trail connection that we're talking about through here. These are, y'all have seen these exhibits before, we had gone through these earlier. This is some renderings that the artist has taken photographs, and then overlaid proposed improvements. And then where's the other layout? Yeah, if, Melissa, can you pull up?
Melissa?
For the council, the reason I think that you were asked to do this is because in your ordinance, which is the governing document, not that plan--
Right.
You only called for two classifications of land use.
Right.
And that's going to be the controlling document, and you may not be the only one that's doing that. You may sell that development off, and I felt it was, that document does not reflect what's in the context of your ordinance.
That's correct. That's exactly correct.
Well, Mike, while he's looking, can you tell us the significance of what you just said?
Well, the point I just want to make is, we're in a public setting here--
I was just trying to make the full screen.
--and people are looking at a picture, but that picture is not binding. What is binding is the ordinance that sets forth the development parameters, and that's what I addressed, in the difference between the zoning and the subdivision. And in that document, it only calls for two classifications of lots. This shows four, but there's only two within the ordinance. So, if this gets approved, and it's sold to another developer, the developer has to go with what's in the context of the ordinance, which is two classifications of lots.
They have to.
Unless they come back to you and get it amended.
Well, they're minimums, they can always exceed.
They can exceed, but, 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 but they have the right to do, and, and I want to make sure the council, because that's been a very misunderstood fact. And I, and I want the council to understand what they're approving, because we're the ones that have to address the citizens once the development starts.
So, we had some, help me out, we had some conversation about having 50- and 60-foot front lots--
Mm-hmm.
--and 6,000 or 7,000 square feet.
Yes.
And those were the two things we talked about.
Yes, sir.
But that's not reflected in the second reading of this ordinance?
The ordinance, no, that, that, what, the only point I'm trying to make is, the site plan that's attached to the ordinance you have tonight shows for four different classifications of lots, but the ordinance only calls for two classifications of lots.
And those two would be what I just described?
Yes.
And so, is there a conflict here of some sort? Help me out, Mr. Singleton.
No, sir, I, I think Mr. Talbot's point was, and, and the purpose to us doing the other exhibit was, we were asked to say, okay, show council what a 60/40 split really looks like. Because the plan that, that we've suggested is the most appropriate plan for the site isn't just two. And I'll tell you that when you have a gridded layout, you end up with a lot more lots that are much more closely grouped in size, and given the more organic nature of our plan, we end up with a wider variety of lots. In the very first, and again, this process has been going on a while, in the first couple of meetings that we had with planning commission, we only showed two different sizes, but because there was such a variety of sizes, it was suggested that we differentiate what size all the lots were. So a couple of the other changes that, that we've made to the PUD since, the PD since the beginning, where originally, we had talked-- talked about the fifty and sixty-foot lots. We had five-foot setbacks and some seven-and-a-half foot setbacks on the sixty-foot lots. There was some great concern and, and discussion about that, and so one of the other proposed amendments to the, the PD that's before you tonight amends all the side setbacks on, on all the lots regardless of if they're fifty-foot or they're sixty-foot lots. It increases the side setbacks on all the lots to seven-and-a-half feet. So it creates that space between houses as requested. So that was something that, that we've brought back to you between that last meeting and tonight to say, you know, here's a, a, an additional revision to the PD, um, that, that changes the side yard setbacks throughout to be uniform seven-and-a-half, which is consistent with your current ordinance.
Is there, Mike, is there another possible, uh, amendment? I just want to make sure I know what we're talking about. You just, Mr. Singleton just mentioned one, that was a seven-point, going from five to seven-point-five. Uh, was it, do we don't need a, uh, do we need to, have we specified the, uh, what the forty-sixty split is and what those lots are, and is that binding for this? And then I'll call on Kelly.
Well.
Or do I even know what the question is?
Well, again, on page two of, of, of four, on exhibit A-one, it shows that we have, again, two classifications, which are your minimum lot size, and it still has the sixty-forty split. So, again, we're back to two classifications of lots. On three of four, the interior or side setback for the SF or the urban five is five foot, but for the urban six, it's seven-point-five.
But I thought he just said that.
But the change would be to make it all seven-point-five?
That's correct.
So is, are there any other changes that, that are, we're talking about, Melissa?
I, I have to admit, I, I don't know everything. I, I think David's offering this up this evening.
Okay, no, that's fine.
But I would say if, if you choose to exceed with, with changing that, I could very easily change this to seven-point-five for both setbacks in this, this ordinance. I think that's a very easy, uh, change to do.
Okay, and, uh, Kelly?
Mr. Singleton, you, you mentioned that, that the grid layout was, um, not, not as efficient and not as desirable as the one that you have shown with the cul-de-sacs and, and all of that. But I don't see anything in this ordinance that, that ties you to this. You could, if, if we approve this, go to a grid layout, couldn't you? I mean, is that allowed? Because I don't see anything here that ties you to, uh, uh, this more aesthetic layout that we, you've shown us.
No, ma'am, I don't think there's anything in the PD that does warrant that, but if we were going to do a gridded layout, I wouldn't be before you asking for a PD. I mean, if we were going to do a gridded layout, I don't need to, to amend the zoning.
Right, but as Mike's point was, if for some reason you are out of the picture at some point, another developer could come in and they could, based on these rules, do a gridded layout, right? Because it doesn't, it doesn't mean that they have to follow this picture that you've given us. Am I understanding this right?
Well, I, I, you know, I guess you could. I mean, I, I guess the short answer is you could, but in my industry, anyone would say, why would you? Um, once we've gone to the lengths to get where we are today, why would you go backwards? Um, I would submit that that's, you know, uh.
I, I get what you're saying. I, I get what you're saying, but the public sees this picture.
Right.
And they, they believe that more or less, this is going to be the layout.
Right.
But we, the thing that we approve and sign doesn't say that that is going to be the layout. It doesn't have to be that way. So we have to make it clear that if for some reason you are not in the picture, you sell it or whatever, the next developer could do a grid layout, just like the one that you showed us, as long as they stuck to these, these same lot, lot sizes and, and rules.
Well, and they would still be kept at a hundred-and-seventy.
Right.
So my question to them would be, if you're going to do that, why would you, you know, there, there's no advantage to them to doing that.
Right.
The other thing that, that, um, we are proposing with the PD, I mean, there are, you know, a substantially, uh, greater parkland and trail dedication that's part of the PD. And, and so.
Is that in, is that in the ordinance, Mike?
What's that?
That they will, that they will have the substantial amount of, of parkland?
Well, they say a substantial, and that was one point I wanted to bring to the attention of the council. That's on page four of, four. Um, they say that a substantial portion, again, that's, that's a term that's up to the discretion. Um, I, I think we ought to at least try to achieve at least a minimum amount of land that will be, be given to parkland, because a substantial portion to you may be different than a substantial portion to me.
Okay, so there's no actual figure in here, just a substantial portion?
A substantial portion.
But could it, could it include something more specific?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Gary?
Yeah, I would like to see that, in fact, uh, that it's tied down to the amount of, of parkland minimal, um, the, the minimum amount that you would allot for parkland to be in this document. But also, I would just ask, Kelly, what difference does it make to us whether it's a grid or not a grid?
Because the, the perception is, it's going to be this, this very nice layout here. Mr. Singleton has laid out the grid saying, this is bad. This is, this is not what you want. This is a bad use of land. It doesn't really make much difference to us, but it makes a difference to the public, because they think they're getting this. And we, I want to make it clear that we don't have the, we don't have the, the rules in this document that says they are definitely getting that. They could at some point get a grid layout. I'm not saying good or bad, I'm just saying, I'm making it clear that it doesn't, it doesn't specifically state they'll have cul-de-sacs and they'll have this aesthetically pleasing layout. It could be grid if the developer wants it to. Just clarifying it for the public.
Okay, Kay?
Uh, Mr. Singleton?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have any intentions of passing this development on to anybody else?
I would like nothing more than to develop this tract in your city if it doesn't kill me first. Quite frankly, this process has been very trying, and so, um, it, 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 this has proven rather difficult.
So your intention is to do this yourself?
Yes, ma'am, that's.
Thank you.
Council, in addition to adding this.
Uh, yeah, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, in addition to adding the specificity to parkland, we do need to add something in the ordinance that there is a max of one-seventy lots, because that's not in the ordinance.
And I would suggest that that be added under D, where it talks about residential pro- product type and requirements, that I've listed a number three, the total amount of the residential lots shall not exceed one-hundred-and-seventy residential lots.
Yeah, let me just clarify. Gary, I know you've done a lot of work on this, and I appreciate that, and Mr. Singleton, I appreciate your working with our engineer on the committee. Uh, I've noted in this conversation, three things that need to be changed, and I also understand that there's no rule, uh, saying that we can't on second reading make a change, and it still carries on second reading. That is the seven-point-five percent side setbacks, the designated amount of parkland, which is not specified yet, and a maximum of a hundred-and-seventy lots. And there's something about two, something or others, but I don't think that matters. Is that correct? Is there anything else that needs to, I mean, as y'all have worked through this over these several meetings, is there, are these the kind of things that you would need to see to make this more palatable to you? Is that correct? Is there anything else? Mike?
No, I think.
Those three things? Uh, so, of course, um, let me, let me, if you're, if you're answering my question, I'll call on you. If not, I'll.
Yeah, I, I was just going to say that these are the issues that I felt were needed to make, uh, the ordinance a complete and a reasonable compromise, uh, as far as the side setbacks and clarification on the lots and the, and the parkland. I think those items put together make a complete document here.
Willie?
Uh, I, I didn't, I didn't realize, or we, I didn't, I didn't know if we agreed that Gary was going to go speak to the developer.
Excuse myself. I, uh, uh, I think nobody agreed to that. I think Gary on his own has talked to him. We talked, and he's, Mike's been aware of their conversations, and, uh, I don't, I think it was, I think it's appropriate that he, that he did.
Okay, well, no, no, let me finish my comment. My comment was, when, when he brought that up, he said, I'd like to be part of that discussion to meet with the developer, and I asked a question, well, shouldn't you involve someone from the neighborhood or a couple of people from the neighborhood? And my question to Gary, when you went and spoke with developer, did you have any input? Did you ask for any input from any neighbors?
Actually, what happened was I went to Mike, who was.
That's not what I asked. I said, did you ask?
No.
Okay, that's my, that was my question. And that's, that's the part that upsets me. I, uh, here's my deal. I've never seen anything like this probably in twenty-five years, where somebody has come in and asked for a zoning request, and, and it's just like the, the neighbors. To me, I, I get the feeling, and, and I think you asked a question that, are we on TV? Everybody has noticed this, I think, in the community and, and it's a subject of discussion, that the council, this particular council, particular over, over councils that they've been, been around or lived around for the last twenty years, have taken the side of a developer over a particular group of neighbors and, and live in your community, and that you, that elected you to represent them, and it just seems to them that you're, are, are taking the side of a developer and not even listening to any of their causes. That's all I'm going to say about this.
Good.
Excuse me, Mayor, if I could, with respect to Mr. Schiff, Mr. De La Rosa, I came to Bastrop and met with you at your request as well, so I did not feel it inappropriate to meet with Mr. Schiff when he asked the same. So.
I met, I met, no, to say, to say completely, I never knew what was going on. I never attended a planning and zoning meeting. I was just getting a lot of discussion from, uh, citizens out in the community, and I met with you, the city manager and the planner, right there in that back room.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And you laid out a lot of this information.
That's correct.
And, and since then, I've been getting more comments and more comments from the neighbors. I was trying to be responsive to the neighborhoods, neighborhood people, because I'll guarantee you, all the information that we're seeing tonight for the first time, I'll guarantee it never passed through the Planning and Zoning Commission, because if it had, maybe their decision would have been different, and we probably wouldn't be sitting here tonight.
I believe you're wrong about that, Willie.
Kay, go ahead.
Excuse me?
Kay, I want you to.
Firstly, I believe that this has gone through the Planning and Zoning Committee, Committee, and they have done an extremely exemplary job of making sure that we get all the information we need. We found a few more things to go through, and I do not appreciate your disparaging remarks about this council who has worked diligently to represent the people and stay within the law. And we do have confinements and boundaries, which Mike has explained, so for you to be so disparaging is very unnecessary, and I find it insulting.
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure, Willie's.
You want me to answer that?
No, I want to say I'm not sure.
Let's remember the plan retreat. We're all going to get along. We're all in together.
Breathe.
Take a deep breath.
Breathe.
I, I don't know disparaging or not. I think Willie's made a statement about his history on the council and what he understands his response to, uh, to citizens in the neighborhoods and planning and zoning. And I, I mean, he's certainly welcome to say that, and I, I don't know that it's disparaging, Kay. I mean, I, it's different, uh, but I think.
I feel it's disparaging, and I'd like to drop it now.
Willie's speaking for himself. I'm going to let Gary speak.
Okay.
Go ahead, Gary. Well, I, I thought about it. Actually, I did talk to some of the neighbors. I talked to a couple of people that are sitting here tonight. Andrew Coy, and I talked to Joe, Joe Grady Tuck, and discussed it with them, and neither one of, you know, the, Joe Grady was very supportive of it. I talked to Andrew, and, you know, he said, you know, that, a lot of the neighbors have come out against it, but he really didn't have any, anything against it. Um, so I did talk to some neighbors.
Uh, Doc?
I've talked to some of the neighbors as well, and I just want to make a clarification that, um, we as a council are here for the neighborhoods and for the citizens, but we also have to look at state law. We also have to look at what is legal, and we represent the citizens in the community, but we also cannot break the law. So we need to make sure that we understand that there are only certain things that we can do, and I think that's been explained over and over tonight. And, uh, to think that we were dissing or not respecting the neighborhood, I think is, is, is an incorrect statement. So I just want the neighborhood to know and the citizens to know that we're not ignoring them. We're just trying to stay legal and follow the law in, in our deliberations and our decisions that we make as representatives of this community.
Can you explain to me what we're mandated by law on, on zoning change? I know we're mandated by law when somebody turns in a flat that's, that they confide to all our regulations, sudden regulations. We're mandated by law to approve a flat, but I didn't know we had any mandate to approve a zoning change. So I, I just want to make you aware of that, Doc.
I think our city manager explained it, um, very thoroughly at the beginning.
Uh, Kelly?
Um, to add to, to Councilmember Jackson's comments, um, I would also like to let the citizens know that we, we have listened. We are listening. We are taking your comments very seriously. Um, and the, I have to say personally that I have talked to a lot of citizens who are, um, against the project all the way and don't want any development, which is not part of the, part of the mandate tonight. Um, I have talked to citizens who want the revisions, most, most of the revisions that Mr. Singleton, uh, offered us tonight, and I've also talked to a lot of citizens who are in favor of this project, because we do need housing. Um, there are people that would like to move here, and they, they have no place to move. So I, I have to say that I have heard almost equally, um, vote yes, vote no. So we are listening to everyone, and I just want to make sure that everyone knows that, that we're not, we're not on one side or the other. We are listening to everyone's comments before we make this, make this decision.
Well, as we continue listening to citizens, uh, we will call, I will call on people to speak who have asked to speak, uh, for no more than three minutes on this subject. The, uh, Mayor Pro Tim will keep track of this, and when there's, uh, thirty seconds left, give you a little warning, and, uh, when time's up, time's up. Uh, Brad Cook?
Hi, I'm Brad Cook. I represent the Downtown Business Association, and we, uh, have a resolution, uh, for the approval of the zoning change. And I'd like to read the resolution. I also have copies for everybody. It says, whereas the proposed Piney Creek Bend subdivision has been recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning, uh, excuse me, my voice is not good tonight, Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Bastrop, after the developer agreed to limit the total number of lots to be developed from two-hundred-nine to one-seventy, and has further agreed to dedicate approximately thirty-five acres for the greenbelt parkland and trails along Piney Creek, which would interconnect with the existing Bastrop Trail System. And whereas the subject ninety-point-nine-one acre tract is one of the few properties, excuse me, in the city's own single family, SF-nine, classification with the only other property developed, uh, being Teisham Village, which the developer is seeking to change to plan development, PD. And whereas if the zoning change is not granted, the developer can build up to two-hundred-and-nine lots without any leverage to grant the access of over fifty percent of the tract to the open space and green space, and, uh, and increase the overall density of the, of the two-point, of the tract to two-point-three, uh, units per acre. And whereas the construction of the hundred-and-seventy homes will substantially increase the tax base, and revenues of the city and overall density is only one-point-nine units per acre. And whereas the travel route for all these residents, which is very important to us, will bring those people down Main Street into the city where our businesses are, uh, are located. Uh, now, therefore, it is resolved by the, or, you know, resolved by the Downtown Business Alliance, acting by and through the, its board, that the Bastrop City Council is urged to approve the application of Southwest Land Services for zoning change on the subject of a property from SF-nine to PD classification. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Margaret Silverdiggel. Well, she was here earlier. Oh, there you are.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your service, and thank you for hearing all this, um, and trying to sort all this out. Um, I, I'm going to speak again about, um, access to parks. Um, I was a little surprised to see the, uh, the proposed or possible, uh, SF-nine did not include any dedicated parkland, which is required under a subdivision ordinance, I believe, when it, it has to be out of the floodplain and accessible to the public with two-hundred-feet, uh, street frontage. Um, you know, I can't, I'm not a planner. I don't know how all this works, but what I see here is, um, it's nice to have the trails there, but if someone wants to drive here to use the trails, they would have to park either on Carter Street, where there's a lot of traffic, either here up at the corner, or at the cul-de-sacs. Um, Piney Creek is a navigable waterway, which is open to the public, um, by Texas state law, which is accessible under, um, by the, low-water crossing at Reed's Bend, as well as under the bridge, um, on the upstream. So there is already public access to the creek. So there is already public access to the creek. It is a navigable waterway. It would be really nice to have access to, um, for people to drive up and enjoy that area, um, rather than having to park along the streets. I don't know if the developer's aware of that. Um, but it is a usable waterway. With the increased, um, population in this area and with, um, more use of Fisherman's Park, this is a prime area for more access and more use to park. If you wanted to put a playground in here at some point in the future, there would be almost no way to even get it in there with no street access to that parkland. Um, trails are nice, but it is not a real park as far as having amenities that the neighbors can use, like playgrounds, picnic table. Um, again, accessible, it, it's just not. Um, I would really like to see something more. Um, give us a park. Give us at least a little access to get to the park if someone's to drive there and park along, you know, I'm not, who's gonna park up a cul-de-sac if they wanna get to the trails? It's, you know, we, we would really like to see a little bit more. And I have my 30 seconds. Um, this just isn't good enough still, please. And it has to be rewritten before y'all can vote on it, right? With the limit of 170 houses, with the, okay, so we really would like to see that.
It might be proposed when we get to action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mike, I meant to ask earlier about parks. Would the, would the parkland become city parkland? Uh, where do people park at, uh, Bob Bryant Park? So the city could put parking space in this park, just like we did there? Access to playground equipment, that kind of stuff?
Uh, city actually received, uh, a $500,000 Parks for Wildlife grant to put the amenities in at Bob Bryant Park.
So that sort of thing could happen with any, any, any parkland that's given to us?
Right. What we might wanna consider is put the dedication into what we call the Parkland Trust, so that when you do apply for the grant, you can use the parkland as the city's contribution towards the park grant.
So with the same thing as with Pecan Park subdivision, we have some river frontage that's gonna become part of the, the city parkland. Would it develop it the same way, correct?
Right, I, yes.
Yeah, so any parkland would either develop or not by the city, but wouldn't be anybody else's. But it could be developed.
It could be developed. The only point I'm saying is, I, in other cities, I've actually put the land into a trust because that way we can leverage our dollars and use the value of the land as our contribution, where if you take it as a straight-up parkland dedication, then, then you can't do that.
But whatever, we, the city would have control of the park. The park could have parking places, could have access to, uh, I'm just trying to sort through what Ms. Silvernagle just said.
Okay. And that's, uh, that's an excellent suggestion because the trusts are the way to go about doing that, to make sure to leverage the, uh, funding for future parks and things like that. It's something that would be very important.
Thank you, Doc. Uh, Richard Smarzick. Did I get that right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Come back next time. I'll have it 100%.
Thank you. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, Councilperson, um, city manager. I'm Richard Smarzick, downtown business owner, um, and soon to be resident of that same building. So, um, I understand the positions that the citizens have about the size of these lots. Um, I'm, I, I, I understand their concern, but all I can do is add my story. I came out of San Antonio. I had a 6,300 square foot lot with a 3,300 square foot house. It was big enough for me to put a 48-by, um, 17-foot deck on it. Had enough land to take minutes to mow the grass instead of hours to mow the grass. It was a modern development, um, infrastructure. Streets were great. Um, drainage was great. I expect that to be the same thing here. I don't think enough has been said to the fact that 170 families will move to Bastrop. That is more ad valorem taxes. That is more sales tax. That is people shopping at HEB, shopping at Home Depot, shopping at Lowe's, shopping at, at Hobby Lobby. That's tax revenue. I, 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 I wait for more people to come to Bastrop and find the same thing that I found when I moved here. It's a great city. It's very wonderful. It's very warm. I'd like to have more people have that experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Joe Tuck?
Mr. Mayor, Council? I'm Joe Grady Tuck. I know everybody sitting here. I'm, uh, a lawyer. I have an office downtown Bastrop. I also have a private post office. I am here to speak in favor of this subdivision and, uh, the rezoning of this subdivision. The, uh, the addition of 170 houses, uh, will help alleviate a housing shortage. It will add revenue to the city, both from ad valorem taxes and from the utilities that will be hooked up with the electric and the water and so forth. Uh, I think that the, the city needs that money and can put it to very good use. I also think it will create jobs. I know it will create jobs for carpenters, for, uh, architects, for home builders, for, uh, title companies, for insurance companies. It will be a great boon to this city. Uh, I understand that, uh, some of my neighbors object to the subdivision. Uh, they're, they're my friends. I'm very conscious of their concerns for traffic and other things. I have a concern for traffic. I'm on Wilson Street, and that's one of the streets that's gonna be affected by the traffic flow. And I think it's a balancing act that you, one has to make, uh, increase traffic versus a growth that'll benefit the community. I was here when the, when the council last considered this measure, and for four hours, people got up and railed against any subdivision at all. And that's not the choice here today. I think the choice is, do we have 170 lots with 35 acres of green space donated by the developer? Or do we have 209 lots without any obligation to do that? So life is a matter of choices. I think this is a clear choice. And I think, uh, urge the council to vote for the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tuck. Um, Mike, before I forget it, I wanna ask you something that, referring back to your original, your beginning presentation, you mentioned something about expiration date.
Yeah, I'm running something out of that right now.
Okay, so that's gonna be included? So that would be a fourth addition or fourth amendment?
Yes, when you get to that point, yes, sir.
All right, Council, are y'all ready to move into, uh, uh, Action Section? Or you got more hearing staff? We've heard from everybody, uh, many, many times, or many is, at least many times. Um, now let's see how I do this. We, uh, I believe the council's ready to move from our workshop session. So we will now recess the workshop session and reconvene into a special meeting for any necessary action on the following, which is the, uh, second reading of the ordinance. Now, shall I read this or shall I wait till it's perfected before I read the whole thing? Or let Mike state it for the public, or do I need to read it right now? So shall I read the caption? Or does it matter? I don't want to. So let's just go ahead and, uh, Mike, can you summarize what you think is on the minds of the council?
Okay, on page two of four, item three be added that the total number of residential lots shall not exceed 170 residential lots. That's the first change. On, uh, page three of four, uh, the development standards, uh, the interior side setbacks, both be 7.5 foot for both categories. That's your second change. The third change would be on page four of four, item I. And rather than say a substantial portion, I think the council should identify at least a minimum amount of acreage that they would want for the parkland. That's a policy issue. He said 35. I mean, you, you need to give him some flexibility, but you ought to have at least some degree of assurance that a certain level will be dedicated for parkland, whether it's 20 or 25. But give him some flexibility as well.
Here. And then... Could we hear from the developer?
If we went...
What would be your suggestion?
If we're gonna spell it out specifically?
Well, and because we still are at, at conceptual and because we haven't really looked at what the right-of-way impacts are, I'm totally okay with 25 acres. I think 170 lots under ordinance would be 1.6 acres. Um, a minimum of 25 is no problem. And please know that when we get to that point, it's the intent that, of course, our minimums went from 5,500 to 6,000 feet. We're still kept at 170, but it's the intent that everything between the lots and the center line of the creek will be that park. So it may be 34 acres. It may be, but I would say at, at 25 as a minimum, we're okay with that.
Okay.
But realistically, when we get to the plating process, when we figure out what's between our lots and the center line of the creek, that, that will all be parkland.
And then you might wanna stand right there because I'm gonna throw one more back. And then we add an item K, that this PD shall be approved for a period of 10 years. If the PD is blank percentage complete at the end of 10 years, the developer-owner may request a time extension from the city council to complete the PD. So...
What's the blank?
The percentage. What percentage do you feel comfortable that this should be built out over 10? He showed three to five, but, you know, markets change. Um, I'm, just so there's certainty to it.
What do you recommend, Mike?
60 to 70%. I mean, he's gotta have some flexibility.
Is that okay with you?
Well, I...
Willie, you wanna...
No, I'm gonna wait for Mike to finish the other question for...
I, I think, we now are in a plating issue. And if we file a preliminary on the whole thing and we perfect the final plat by plating half of it, then I wouldn't want the other half to expire. So, um, and again, we're kinda getting, what's that?
You got 10 years to develop.
Yeah, um...
Sixty, and all, all I'm saying is in 10 years, 60% has to be developed.
Okay.
I don't think that's a, and then you, then you have the right at that point to come back and get an extension.
If that's what you're comfortable with, sir.
I'm, I'm just trying to make the same, I'm just trying to create a balance so the public knows what to expect and the council. I'm just trying to create a balance.
Willie, Willie, Willie has a question.
I'm just gonna let Mike finish all this, all these performances, because it's a different question from what he was talking about.
Okay, uh, Kay, yours is related to the, to this?
No, I'm done.
Okay, so you're happy. Uh, Gary, anything? Okay, uh, Willie. Oh, wait, let me back up. You, you, I think, Mike, that's all the changes that you think the council might be interested in, right?
I think that. I think that, uh, that at least demonstrates that we clearly have listened to the citizens. We've put some standards in there, some timeframes, and we've clarified from the conceptual to what can be expected. With some degree that I have to, I clearly do understand the developer's perspective. Till he gets out there and starts laying it out, he has to have some degree of flexibility. If we make it too rigid, it's not gonna work for him.
Uh, Willie?
Uh, Mike, let me see if I understand this correct. On the 170 lots that you're putting in here, excuse me, are you, are you saying that you're agreeable to 102 of those lots of the 170 can be, uh, the small lot sizes?
Well, that's the way it's written, and I'm, so, yes, that's, he doesn't have to put 102 in, but he can.
Well, I'm sure he will, but anyway.
No, no more than?
No more than 102.
So you're, you're, you're putting in that that's gonna be 102? The other question was, I never could find, when we talked about this, I never could find out where, where the balance was of, of the balance of the equalization of the lots were 8,700 square foot. I could never find that. And I don't know if your office or the planning department did either. So that was one of my questions that I wanted to ask at the very beginning. Uh, seven and a half foot?
Let, let's hold off on that. Melissa, you, you or Mike, have any answer to Willie's question?
So I would say, for me, the minimum lot size on that chart is really, um, a representation of, of lot width. So that's kind of the, the first number that you start with. Is it a 50-foot wide lot or is it a 60-foot wide lot? That, in essence, depending on if it's at the end of a cul-de-sac or something else, does shape what the minimum, what the lot size ends up being. So quite honestly, you can have a 50-foot wide lot that can be 10,000 square feet or more based on the size and shape of, of lot. So for me, that's what I look at when I'm looking at, um, lot size primarily is, is what is the lot width? And then the, the factor of what the overall lot size for that is, is a depiction, a depiction of, of where it's at in, in the process. So when you see these larger lots of, of some of the pink and, um, green ones, for example, that are, that are shown in the, the 8,000 and 9,000-plus range, those are obviously at the end of cul-de-sacs or at corners where there are often pie-shaped lots. So when you start getting to that scenario, that's, that's where it is. And, and I do think his numbers are approximately accurate in regards that when you add up all these lots and divide by 170, what's the average lot size? It's, you know, 8,700 square feet or whatever for that.
You're confident there?
Yes.
You're confident, but nobody put that together on paper or to a memo of, to our meeting tonight? I mean, he, he brought that number up. I didn't make that up.
Absolutely. And that's, that is shown on this exhibit right here. So you're absolutely right.
The other deal, Mike, was that make sure we understand, everybody understands that when you talked about the seven and a half foot setbacks on the side versus the other one, it's, uh, basically, uh, 15 foot between brick and brick versus 20 foot between brick and brick.
That's right.
SF9 and that.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Eddie Allen? Uh, Kelly?
Just to clarify, this picture that we're looking at right now, this is, this is Mr. Singleton, your, your vision, what you're, what you're shooting for. So it does contain the larger lots that are not required in this ordinance, but you, you hope to be able to include some of those.
And I think the controlling factor here is more so the limit that you placed, 170 lots. So that, I think, provides him the incentive to pursue that plan by the, by specifically stating that cap.
I have one other question also, Mayor, if this is possible. The, um, the 10, um, the 10 feet that you mentioned earlier, usually it's five feet from the, uh, developer and five feet from the...
I'm sorry. Uh, I'm, excuse me. Uh, pardon, pardon us.
That's okay.
Please go ahead. Please start over.
Let me see if I can remember now. Uh, the five, the 10 feet that we're talking about, I think the developer said he was willing to donate the full 10 feet instead of the normal five and five. Is that captured somewhere in this?
Mike, put your, turn your mic on.
The second change is on three of four. And if you look, this, these are your development standards, which will guide your setbacks. And the interior or side yard setback, it shows five and seven, and it should be 7.5, 7.5.
I, I think he's talking about...
You're talking about the street though, Brooke, aren't you, Doc?
The Carter Street dedication.
Yeah.
On Carter Street, yes, the 10 feet that was, um...
I think it's actually five.
Five, two and a half to five and a half.
Two and a half, two and a half.
Oh, okay.
So is that something that's down the road, Mike, that we can't decide about this? Are you with it?
We will look at that when he lays out his subdivision because we don't, we'll be just drawing an arbitrary line till we have the survey and get, get into the plating process.
Have y'all agreed to a cost on the street?
I, that, that will come up in the subdivision because otherwise we're getting into contract zoning and I won't go there.
But there are decisions the council would make at that point, correct?
That's right. It will be up to the council, and you'll have to be able to justify your proportional requirement of his, uh, dedication and donation to the cost of the street.
I just want y'all to remember that when you're, when you are voting on that later then...
Thank you, uh, uh, Mr. Lame Duck. I think, uh, um, his choice, not mine. Uh, I think, I think we've, yeah, Gary's got another comment. Oh, let me, let me, uh, before you make a motion, and I think, I, I feel that the council is about to make a decision here. And I, I wanna say to the council and to the Planning and Zoning Department and to the citizens of Bastrop, especially those that are in the neighborhood or might be affected by traffic, and to Mr. Singleton, uh, this has been one of the more thoroughly studied issues that we've had, at least in my memory. I, I think, um, we have done a good job of working through this. We have spent a lot of time at many levels. The staff's worked very hard. And I want to, uh, whatever the, the outcome of this vote is, I wanna say I'm, uh, proud of the community for working together and trying to find a way, given the governance that we have all agreed to, for this, uh, this process to, to take place in a orderly fashion where we can make a decision for the benefit of, as I'm sure the vote, the vote will be on the intention of the council to vote, for the benefit of the entire community, uh, not for themselves and not for anybody that's friends of theirs or anything else. But they're, I know they're gonna try to vote to do what's best for our community, and I appreciate each of you for that. And I appreciate everybody that's been involved at every level in this conversation. Now, Gary, I'll take a motion.
I'd like to move, or I do move, that we approve the ordinance as written with the four amendments just clarified by the city manager.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve this on second reading with four revisions to the ordinance that's before you. The first change will be in Area D, where there'll be a third item added, added that the total residential lots shall not exceed 170 residential lots. The second ta, change is on page three, where the side yard setback will be 7.5 for both the urban... five for both the urban and the suburban side yard setbacks. Uh, change three is on item I, a minimum of twenty-five acres. Uh, the site will be dedicated as parkland, and item four will be K. Uh, this PD shall be approved for a period of ten years. If the PD is sixty percent complete at the end of ten years, the developer owner may request a time extension from the city council to complete the PD.
Uh, Ann, you're clear about that, and, uh, JC's saying something over there. Now, now I'll read the caption. Uh, with these, um, with those, um, proposed amendments, the motion is, on second, and this, let me note, final reading of this ordinance granting a zone change for SF nine, single-family residential nine, and A slash OS agricultural open space to PD residential plan development for approximately ninety point nine-one acres within A eleven Bastrop Town Track located north of the railroad tracks on the northwest corner of Riverwood, Hawthorne, and Carter Streets, within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as part of the Piney Creek Bend, setting out conditions and establishing an effective date. And I think we're, you're, you're clear, Ann. Uh, council members are clear, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Shad?
Yes.
Councilmember McInally?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem De La Rosa?
No.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliland?
Yes.
Uh, the motion passes on a four to one vote. Uh, appreciate everyone's help, we're going to take a five-minute recess.
Okay.
I want to ask Ms. McInally if this jewel box full of candy is just for you, or can you share it?
Share it.
Now that important business taken care of, we're going to try to find, uh, Councilmember Gilliland, she's coming, she's approaching the bench. Councilmember Jackson's off somewhere, I'm sure, oh, he's right there, taking care of city business, and he is on his way with food. So we will reconvene into workshop session to, uh, consider the following. This is item five. Discuss projects, issues, financial matters, related issues associated with potential bond election, uh, possibly to be held in November twenty sixteen. Let me, uh, start off by saying, reminding us and, and letting those of you who are listening, or, uh, perhaps remembers well, that we've been working on this for, this particular one for more than a year and a half. When we passed the fiscal year twenty fifteen budget, we, uh, required Mike to cut the budget back to where it would work with fifty-six cents on the ad valorem taxes, down a couple of cents from what it had been before, um, largely on the advice of, uh, the Mayor Pro Tem, so that we could have a four cent margin to work with if we decided to pass some bond issues that we thought were important for the citizens to rule on. We, uh, Mike has reminded us repeatedly that we're still in a, a pretty good bond market, the rates ought to still be, be good, that may not last forever. And Mike, I think you have, would you say what you think we can produce in terms of borrowing for one cent on the ad valorem tax? Turn your mic on, please.
With our adjusted, uh, ad valorem tax, uh, one cent almost is right at a million dollars.
Um, all right, so four cents would do four million.
A minimum of four million.
Uh, may, uh, say, four, four cents might do five million.
My, yes, sir.
Uh, depends on a lot of issue, a lot of, uh, factors. Um, Mike, would you remind us of our conversation last July?
Right.
When we were talking about the possible comprehensive plan implications?
Um, getting prepared for tonight, I went back through all of the minutes of last year, and back in July, we went, started down this path, but we just never picked it back up, and we had a rather extensive discussion back in July back there at that table. And what we discussed was, you, we know that we have the comprehensive plan underway, and we're cognizant of the fact that the comprehensive plan will be making some recommendations for certain improvements, and you wanted the flexibility to address that when it comes before you and you take the ultimate official step of adopting, uh, the, the comprehensive plan. But secondly, a, a term that came out of that July meeting was, was critical needs, and, uh, is it, are we being good stewards of our city facilities and infrastructure if there are some really critical needs that need to be addressed and waiting a year or two before we address them through the comprehensive plan? And at that meeting, um, this is what I was pulled out of the minutes in my notes, from the street side of it, um, we identified, um, the reconstruction of MLK Street from Chestnut to College. That was approximately two million dollars, uh, was our estimate, some I have estimates, some I don't. Uh, the reconstruction of Water Street from Pine Street to College, uh, the reconstruction of Laurel Street from, uh, and Storm Drainage from, um, Pecan to Wilson Street, completion of Phase Three of Farm Street, um, Jefferson Street was discussed greatly, but we did not develop an estimate for that. And also, we did talk about extension of some existing streets, and those were Hassler and Blakeney Lane. Um, I would like to point out to the council, um, the last couple of Saturdays, about between two and five, I've gone up and parked at, uh, Hassler on the south side of seventy-one in the traffic light, and there are times, at, in that timeframe, where cars are queuing up, twelve to fourteen cars stacking up, and it's taking at least two to three stop trips before people are able to exit that. And you take into account, since July, when we discussed that, a new shopping center has opened internally in there with Walmart, a gas station's been added, and on the other side, another shopping center's coming in. So, at least from a, a development standpoint, we've, in, in less than twelve months, we've seen a pretty big explosion of retail, and I think we have to think about that and make sure that it's accessible to our citizens, and so I think Hassler is something that we really seriously should look at. Now, I'm not saying I picked up all the streets and I'm gonna, you'll have plenty of time to add some additional streets, but those were clearly streets that we had lengthy discussions on back in July. From a facility standpoint, a, a high priority to the council was finishing out the buildout of the, uh, police department. Um, I may have a, a way to finance that for you, um, in a couple of weeks that may not require issuing any debt, but we'll, we'll wait until after you get the audit Tuesday night. Um, we've talked about a fire department on the west side of, 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 uh, Bastrop, um, that's going to be extremely important, and our public works yard is adjacent to a tract of land that's owned by LCRA, and I, I'm of the opinion that LCRA is in a mood, a mode of disposing of a lot of those types of assets right now, and I really think we need to think seriously, if they decide that they're going to sell that tract of land, at, at a minimum, we tie that tract of land up for the public works and electric department, because that clearly would set the stage for the expansion of that, that, that area for our public works and our electric and for the next twenty-five to thirty years. Um, and that's doing some long-range planning, but, uh, if somebody else was to buy that tract of land, um, it would really impinge the ability, we're pretty much built out on the track that we're on. And in the parks and rec area, I think this has been brought up every year since I've been here, and that's a skate park, and at some point in time, we're going to have to address building a skate park in somewhere, whether it's in the new park or an existing park, but it, it has repeatedly come up every year. I know Trey has to deal with it about every parks board meeting, and, uh, so those are just, uh, some of the things of the critical needs that were identified in, in July.
You want to stop him at that point? Willie's got a question, if we could, before you move into kind of long-range ones, let me let Willie comment.
I don't, that, that's where I'm stopping.
Mike, do you have a copy of those streets that you, you named and the cost on each street, or?
I've got most of them, Willie.
Well, I mean, that, well, can you get it to us in the next meeting, or?
Yes, sir, I'll, I'll have it to you by Tuesday night.
Something to look at, uh?
Yeah, I'm, this will be my city manager's report.
I just need to make sure I heard you right, was it Hassler you were talking about on the south side of seventy-one?
Yes, sir. We need to do that extension. Now, we, we have.
Extension to where?
Well, of course, Pecan Park, a lot of that will be predicated upon Pecan Park and how they develop, but if we don't at least extend it down to the LCRA, uh, easement soon, or if that develops, we'll never get that extension through.
Well, you know, some, somewhere down the line, I think the city needs to take an approach where we need to encourage a lot of development on that south side of the seventy-one, because I'm not going to argue about Hassler needing to be, uh, extended, but I think if, if we encourage development and, and encourage development to happen from, say, Hassler to, to three oh four, Agnes needs to be opened up to three oh four somehow.
No question, and that's one I forgot to put on, you're right.
Somehow, if we can do something to encourage or, and encourage people to come in and develop those properties that are, that are just sitting vacant there.
Right.
I, I, I think that goes the wrong way.
No, and I, and all I'm talking about is the portion that will not be extended by development, and that's that portion at the end of Hassler down to that cross between, uh, from three oh four all the way, because there's one section that was plowed with no right-of-way dedication. And so the only one that can do that is the city. Unless, I mean, I guess a developer could come in and replat that, but it's going to be, it's a, if you recall, when we looked at it some time back, about the best we can get through there is about a sixty-foot right-of-way, without really getting into impinging upon some of the properties in that area.
Well, let me ask you this, with what Mr. McDowell is doing with that, is it DM Park, is that what it's called?
Yes.
It, it needs development going as far as Orchard Parkway behind the south side?
Yes, sir.
Somewhere in there, okay.
Yeah, if, if we could at least get down there, down to that point where I'm talking about, and he puts his extension in, then I think he'll be enticed to put that little piece in, because that will increase the value of his property.
Sure. Gary?
I think another priority that should be added to the street list would be the Carter Street north of the tracks. I mean, we've talked about that over the last few meetings. Uh, I don't know when that would have to be done, it sort of, I don't think it would want to be done until you obviously have a, a plat from, uh, an approved plat from the developer, but it ought to be on our plate somewhere.
And I think as, as a caveat to that, one of the things we discussed, and I pulled out of the file back at our January retreat of two thousand and fifteen, was extending Carter Street north up to the Mesquite Street right-of-way, and then extending Mesquite Street from that Carter Street up, uh, eastwardly where it ties in at Wilson, and that would create a, a complete loop, and within that area is a platted subdivision that has never been built.
And no, I think without a doubt, the development, you know, the building of Mesquite Street would add to the, you know, would entice the development of that part of town.
And that's part of our redevelopment, we, we had a very lengthy discussion on that redevelopment of that area. We on the right-of-way?
Yes, we do. Doc?
Uh, in going out in the neighborhood and talking to some people also, another area that I was, that, uh, people have approached me about, and I'm not sure, I'll, I'll try to get more specifics on it, but from, um, another entrance into Tahitian off of Tahitian Drive by, by the hospital drive, I think along in there, they were, they were mentioning there should be another way of getting in and out, especially with evacuation and things like that, and that's something that the city, maybe along with the WCID, well, with the, uh, property owners in Tahitian could work with, and that part is in the city limits, and so working out another route out because of the bottleneck that's been created over the, the years there, and, um, I, they'd mentioned, some people have a plan, but, uh, they didn't expressly, uh, give me the full details on it, but I'll try to bring that back to council later on.
If you had a tank, you could drive it today, or a four, an eight-wheel drive. Willie, did you have something else? I'm sorry, your mic.
No, but I, I would comment on, on, Judge Poppy is very, uh, very keen to find, finding more evacuation routes in case we, in need of a fire or something, and certainly, I know BDC is talking one time on the backside of Tahitian Village and Pine Forest through the, through the ED Park and out that direction, but I, I think everything that we talk about as far as evacuation routes in Tahitian Village would include, uh, Judge Poppy in the county.
Um, Mike, your list is, as I take it, in your way of thinking, doesn't take a, uh, comprehensive plan to figure out that stuff?
Those were things that we felt were critical needs, it clearly exceeds the amount that we've talked about, and I think that's kind of where we stopped.
Yeah.
And, uh, we may want to move some into the bond program that you present to the voters, but our discussion back in July, at least from my perspective, there was pretty much unison around the, from the council, that these were all critical needs, we couldn't do all of them, but we just never carried the discussion to the finality, which ones should we do?
So, or there was, is there anything else on your list that we had talked about that falls more into the wait and see what the comprehensive plan shows?
Um, no, I think that the critical needs were the ones that we've identified, there might be one or two.
Did you mention fire station on the west side?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Yes, sir, I did.
All right, friends, um, is there anything else? I mean, Mike's kind of got a list there, obviously more than we've got money for, well, uh, no, we got, we could, I don't know if we have enough money or not, but whatever. Anything else we want to put on that list? Mike's going to work it up for us for his, uh, city manager's report for Tuesday.
Now, one thing that's really important that I want you all to understand, because this will depend upon which route we go, if you want, if you want to even put these projects before the voters, that's your prerogative, or you can, there's two methods of financing, general obligation bonds or certificates, but if we go to the, the general bond route, we have got to have this done and packaged and the ballots prepared no later than August twenty-second.
Well, so let's talk about process. Uh, I, I don't know, you know, one of the things, Willie, I think you, one of the things you've advised is that, uh, from time to time, that there's a point at which we really need to let the voters decide certain things, and I don't know if any, if anything in this affects that or not, or is reference to that, but I think that's a good, and, and one of the first questions we ought to ask is one Mike just raised, you know, do we really need to do these things? How much money do we have whichever way we go? Do we want to go through, uh, a, a bond election process? And if we do, then we've got to take that date that Mike mentioned and work our way backwards and make sure we get, uh, hearings and response from the community and so forth back, uh, on these. It's, um, I'm not sure Mike's named anything that's of the nature of, like, those of you all that were on the council before, this building and the building across the street, or, well, this building in particular, um, was a, everybody knew we needed it, but it was still a pretty major thing that wasn't exactly like roads with potholes in them. Uh, maybe a few other things that we've done, but that, I mean, that's obviously going to be up to the council, so that's a first. Well, I'm saying, we now talk about that, and you, now, or, I'm saying on Tuesday, I think the thing we ought to start doing is talking about COs versus bond elections, uh, and start narrowing down, you know, what you really want to do in either case, and start doing that fairly quickly. So, Willie?
In my, in my, in my opinion, you know, until, until I see a list of, of everything that Mike's, Mike had, has written off tonight and, and a, and a cost, and, and in the discussion that needs to be had is, how much do we think we can bite off? Uh, my personal thing is that I think.
I think any kind of specific bond issue with streets, or fire stations, or extension of roads, or new roads out into the commercial area, need to be, that, that needs to be taken before the voters of the city.
Well, that's, that's the kind of conversation we'll have on Tuesday. Can we get that on the agenda? Michael have on his city manager's report, and we'll post an item, Ann, that is about, you know, what y'all want to do about, uh, bonds or not, COs versus, uh, bond elections, what, what process we want to go through to narrow it down. He'll have estimates, how we want to go, maybe in any case, we want to go, you know, make sure the voters have a chance to weigh in. So, uh, Mike, you were about to say something, then Kelly?
I just want to point out one thing. In talking with our Director of Public Safety and our Fire Chief, if we do decide that we're going to build the fire station to the west, which really is inevitable, as part of that bond package, we're probably going to have to include the price of a firefighting truck, because we don't have the equipment that we could adequately staff. So that would happen, you'll see that built into my cost projection.
Okay. Kelly?
It seemed like the last time that we discussed this, we, we got a list together, and we were all given copies and asked to prioritize what we each thought, and then they, they tallied them up so that we could all weigh in. Could we, could we have something like that again, Mike?
Well, let's, let's talk about that as part of the process Tuesday, and you can suggest that. We can figure out, we may want to narrow it down before we do the prioritizing, or we can figure out how to do the prioritizing. So let's, let's add, we'll add that to the conversation Tuesday.
Yeah, we're obviously going to need a list and some costs before we can even figure out what's a priority.
Right. So that's, but what you're saying is part of the process, so that we get our priorities straight. Thank you.
Right.
Anybody else?
I think the, the point that the mayor's making is the critical point. We got to stay on this every council meeting. We got to make, and if you think of something that I left off, please let me know, because I want the list to be as comprehensive as we can, and then we'll start the process of whittling down and what direction we want to go. But we're, I'm going to keep this on my city manager's report right up until August of 27, because if we don't, it's going to, another year's going to slip by, and we're not going to get there.
Yeah, and, and the bond market's not likely to be as favorable a year from now as it is.
That's right.
Mayor, we're not correct. I mean, the reason I, I've never brought up anything since our budget meetings was that I thought we were waiting for a comprehensive plan to come out and state that. But, you know, some of these streets that Mike had identified were, were streets that we knew, we had that, that needed work, that really didn't need for a comprehensive plan.
Yes, I, I think, and I think that's kind of where Mike was going, that if we, if we see there's something that's so important, it's not going to make any difference to the comprehensive plan, mentions it or not, it may be smaller than comprehensive, but needs to be done. If that's the case, why wait?
And, and Willie, that's exactly the point, or was the context of our discussion back in July. We, we, we knew we needed to do some of these, or if not all of them, but we, the, the discussion kind of was, let's figure out what we want to do, and then we'll leave the rest for the bond program. But we just never finished that discussion and said, these are the ones we're going to do, and we're going to issue some COs. And again, the process is up to y'all, whether COs or GOs. But my point is, I think some of these are critical, and that's what we, we termed them, is critical. And I think we just collectively need to agree which are the top critical ones and move forward.
Do you have a list right now that states streets or?
Yes, sir.
Or fire sta, that, that's kind of like in your capital improvement program for the next, I'd say, five years that, that we could work off of?
I'll have sheets for you.
You'll have that in your city manager's report?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we'll see that. Gary?
Ready to move for adjournment.
Uh, was that a motion?
The motion.
Second by, uh, Willie. Would you call the roll?
Councilmember Schiff?
Oh, wait a minute, I got to get out of the workshop session here. Thank you very much. Bastrop City Council adjourned the workshop session and reconvened into special meeting to take any necessary action. Mr. Schiff?
I move for adjournment.
Second by Mr. Delarosa. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Delarosa?
Hi, yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliland? Councilmember McInally?
Thank you all. We're adjourned.